Alright, let's start the meeting of the Old Springfield Board of Appeals. All four current members are here, so we have a quorum. It's a brief agenda tonight, just paperwork, no applications. Let us, um, let's first look at the resolutions, draft resolutions. We have three decisions that were made recently. Draft resolutions that describe the decision, so. Let's start with the one, number three, two thousand four, three, or five Furnist Street. Let's take a moment, look it over and see what we all think. John, I think you had a question last time about the accuracy of.
Yeah, well, it is southeasterly, so.
What do you, what do you think?
The, the draft refers to the side yard several times as the southeasterly side yard. So the question is whether that's accurate.
Well, that is the side yard, I mean, that's part of the side yard. I think the variance, nonconforming, is at the southwest corner of the building.
Oh, wow.
That's why, that's why I brought it.
Yeah, okay, I brought, perhaps, a, a survey also, the same thing, I guess.
No, what's each of yours sort of marked the way west makes sense?
Oh, this is, um, this is, this is, um, one fifty-three Main Street, whereas.
Oh, wait, which one? I, I have, I have the other thing here. Alright, there we go. Okay. Yes, so. I think the, my understanding was the variance because they were increasing the second floor addition and it was affecting where it was narrowest with the side yard setback to the backside corner of the house.
Okay, I think you, like, from what I understood, they were filling out this corner, like where there, where it says concrete stoop, um, they were building over that.
Hmm, that's right.
Where I've drawn dotted lines.
That's right.
Filling out that square.
That's right.
So, and, and the, the reduction in question is here.
That's right, and that's why it goes from five feet to four feet, four inches.
Right.
Because that was open space.
It's supposed to be five feet here, now this is the five feet, this is gonna be the four, four. Um, so the que, so, the way I read it was variance concerns this side yard. It's supposed to be five feet minimum, they're, they're asking for it, they did ask for it to be four feet, four inches. And since we're looking at north that way, or east that way, south that way.
Right, the question is, does this here, does this meet the side yard variance? It's not really marked. So is the side yard, because it goes on an angle, the building's on an angle. And this is already grandfathered in for whatever it was, right?
As a side yard setback, uh, well, that's.
Well, it would still, even, it would, if it was still in a setback, it would still be needing a variance anyway, I mean, because it would be.
This is, um, all, is more, it's already sufficient, this is not nonconforming.
Right.
Nor is this, this is conforming, five feet here. So, the question is, when they build out this corner and they're down to just under five feet.
Well, that was, so you rather than refer to this, why not just the south, uh, south side of the building?
Well, it's, we, we have to identify the yard. Okay, it's a variance that affects one yard, one particular yard.
So are we, so the question is, do you believe this is really the southeasterly portion?
Uh, I think this is the southeasterly side yard, that's what I would call it. Because if you start in the center of the property, you have north, south, so this is like heading southeast.
So, yeah, in fact, where's the, it should be on the map, here we go, yeah, right, if, so if you're looking at it, it's the true north. It would be southeasterly even though, yeah, we'll just have to ask the Hudson River to sort of shift itself a little bit. Just.
You know, first, yeah, first I was going, yeah, that makes sense because of me thinking of Furnist Street this direction.
Right.
Thinking.
But, but the true, the true north.
Right.
Is, and in fact, so the survey marks that it's true north, then that would make the statement accurate. If you put it parentheses, if you're following true north. So, so I agree with that, and, um, so the variance is needed for, well, yeah, because they're filling in that area. And they're, they're also going up to a second floor, so. It's a little bulkier, like in the minutes, I think some things need to be slightly arranged, uh, in that, but anyway.
We'll get to that.
Yep. I, otherwise I don't have a problem with it. I'm sure I find my notes, I cannot, I swear I sent you notes after you sent John's notes, but I may not have ever.
Oh, at that time, yeah.
Did you send Mary Ann or me?
It would have been you, but I'm not sure I ever hit set. So, I'm, I'm looking.
So I, I didn't see if I got Mary Ann's immediately, but.
Yeah.
I, I can look you up real quick.
I'll do it, so you don't, we don't have to, I won't hold this up. Nothing I have is conflicting with.
Yeah, no, I think it looks, I think it looks good.
Okay. So if, um.
So we're not changing the minutes at all?
Well, now we're just dealing with the resolution.
That's right, I mean, I mean, not the minutes, I meant the resolution, so.
No one has proposed any change, right?
Nope.
No one has a change, would someone, no, the motion we accept?
I'll, you'll accept the minutes as, uh, already drafted. The, the, the resolution, uh, and that being the resolution for the property of five Furnist Street, twenty-four oh four dash zero three, as drafted, group.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Moving on to forty-one Morris Avenue. Take a moment to, to read this one.
So I, I saw that, like on page, uh, one down, uh, second to last paragraph at the end, which is well below the maximum comma, which is twenty-two percent, do you think there's any need to put it in or just leave it without being overly specific?
Oh, yeah, um, after the completion of the proposed addition, lot coverage will be well below the maximum.
Sure, comma, which is twenty-two percent, which, because the porch is sort of large, it's, it's two hundred seventy-five square feet. It's still way below, okay, I mean, it's just being a little bit more specific, they could always look it up and say, we know, we understand it's well below the maximum.
Well, actually then, would it be further useful then to say what it, what the lot coverage will be? And so that we can, yeah, compare it to the twenty-two percent.
Right.
So what was, um, what was the final coverage? Um, I, I, let's see.
I think it was twenty-two percent.
Oh, you're, oh, okay, okay, yeah, um.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Right, okay, twenty-two percent is his lot coverage.
Right, with the porch, with the porch.
Then we should have it read something like, um, in addition, even after the completion of the proposed addition, the lot coverage will be, will, uh, will be twenty-two percent, which is well below the maximum.
Perfect, and that's my resolution.
Close. Any other changes, corrections?
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah. It immediately wanted me to get my compass out again, directionally.
Yeah.
You know, I find, twenty, there is a separate name, Belvedere, where it seems like, just sort of weave into grand view, but I always thought it was all one street, but it is Belvedere, then West Belvedere, because I guess on, on the other side, for us nine, there is another Belvedere, East Belvedere.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution. Or forty-one Morris Avenue for the new coverage.
As amended, as amended.
As amended, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, two down, one to go.
It's easy for us to read it and, uh, you've written it all.
Yes.
You know, I'll be laughing, it's like during the hearings, I, I should have just kept a copy of one of your minutes to be able to go through the, uh, the secret stuff and, you know, twist and everything, because you, you have it all right there, right in the side of the minute, so anybody's ever doing it again, exactly, bring a copy of the minutes and go through the early part.
It's a good idea.
But this is eighteen Morris Avenue.
On this one, and this is a question. So part of what they're doing is, um, fixing existing problems with that garage, right?
Yeah, the roof.
Yeah, um, because they were talking about there being structural problems, how much does that? And I don't know if that would help to put that in here, because that's in part what they're doing, they're, they're fixing structural problems.
Reconstructing the roof to resolve failure, uh, deterioration.
And I don't know how much that goes into, uh, or should go into our decision making when we're thinking about those things.
Yeah, that's, that, that does go in, it did go into it, because that, um, that, for one thing, it plays into the self-created factor, because potentially, they didn't, um, get their, their, um, storing damage from age for water contractions, not self-created. That is mentioned, oh, but just briefly, the very, the very last whereas paragraph, where, where the self-created factor comes in.
Right, yeah.
The need to reconstruct the garage roof damaged by water contractions, not self-created. But, um, yeah, maybe it's, would be a good idea to bring that out earlier.
Well, you have that here, whereas, I think the, where, whereas from the bottom, whereas the re, uh, reconstruction of the garage would raise roof seven inches.
Right.
Because you're doing that and it's adding a little bit more bulk, just a little bit more, and that would be in the side yard setback. And I think also, where you mentioned, uh, to where, whereas for the ZBA finds that necessary variance does not concern the side yard setback, because both work did not affect the norally perimeter of the house, therefore would not change the pre-existing nonconforming setback on the side. But they are building out a little bit, I, from my remembrance, uh, from the house to create that bathroom. They're building towards the street.
From the house, right, but.
So is that adding bulk in the side yard?
It adds upwards, but not, yes, it does add up, they're, they're increasing height in that area, but they're not changing setback, which is the horizontal dimension from the property line.
From the north property line, yeah, they're not changing it.
Not reducing it or so.
But, but my question to you is, if it's pre-existing nonconforming and it doesn't exist there before, right, I mean, I, I should say that, that then, the addition, the small little addition, does not exist, and now you're creating a little bit more bulk next to the neighbor. Would that become part of a variance issue?
Yeah, well, that is exactly the variance of, um, nineteen, or one thirty-four nineteen G, which says you can't add height. If you have, if, if your structure is extending into the yard, you can't add height to that structure.
Oh, so in this case, we're really building straight out for that new little compartment area?
Yeah.
I'm just making sure.
I wish I could, I wish I had that plan that shows it like a little nook that they're fitting the new structure in. And is that even in, that's on the house side, it's not on the neighbor side, does that make sense? So it's probably not even in the portion of, on top of the garage that extends into this setback area.
The addition does extend slightly, uh, inch across the setback line.
Okay.
So it, it, they are, therefore increasing the height.
Yes.
Within the yard, but they're not reducing the setback, so it's not a setback variance, it's a height within the yard variance. Can't add height within a yard.
So we have here, and you, and you wrote, uh, the ZBA finds that the necessary variance does not concern the side yard setback, because both were, would not affect it nor the perimeter of the house, and would not change the pre-existing nonconforming setback on that side, which is accurate there. Uh, so, my question is, the fact that they're building a little bit of extra bulk, you know, by building out for that little portion of the addition, which is really relatively substantial in this case, that doesn't, even though it falls partly in the setback, it's not necessarily building it up.
It is, it is building it up, um, but it is not affecting the setback. So it's a, it's a vertical increase, it's not a horizontal increase, so.
But it's a bulk increase that's in that pre-existing setback?
Yes, in the yard, so.
Would that necessarily require a variance?
It did, that, that is my T G.
Okay, so I just found it confusing where it says, uh, that the necessary variance is not concerned the side yard setback.
It's not, setback is a horizontal dimension, right, how far back horizontally are you from the property line? And they haven't changed that, it's, it's, it was, it's the same after the project as it was before.
I understand that, so the question is, is, is just the conception of it, that there's a setback, and in this case, the building is existing in that setback area, right, we know that. So there is a setback, the building's existing, and, and then you're building out that building a little bit in that setback area. So it's not changing the, the existing setback, which is nonconforming.
Trying to height, you're.
Adding height.
Within the setback.
Okay, so I was just wa, wondering about the wording, that's all.
Yeah, but there's, it just, we have two clauses in the code that cover the two dimensions, the horizontal and the vertical. You can't get bigger, within the yard area, which is supposed to be open and uncluttered, can't get, you have pre-existing nonconform, you can't get bigger in either dimension, either, can't.
And, and so what the building inspector at this point did is talk about the vertical, correct?
Well, he, he only cited setback, side yard setback, which is the horizontal, that's what we're saying, it's not act, it's not correct. It's a fact, it's a vertical violation here, it's a vertical one.
Alright, so I, I see how they're looking at, you were on the, the, you know, the re, zoning, uh, update committee, right, so.
Yeah, but the problem with the code before was, we didn't have the vertical, we didn't have a clear statement of the vertical problem.
So, so it was ambiguous, I mean, you know, it was just a broad statement of setback, eh, back in the old code, eh, that was the way it was understood, wasn't separately discussed as a vertical, as a pre-existing nonconforming setback.
Yeah, I, I, no need to analyze the old code, yeah.
No, 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 so I just, I want to make sure it's accurate, because I, the way I look at it, and I'm probably reading it under the old code, code where it's saying that, you know, it does not concern the side yard setback. And at times we would think, well, the new increased size of the building, the building we know is nonconforming, it exists in the setback area. Uh, so therefore it might be affecting, and, but you're saying, yes, it is on a height thing.
Right, yeah, before that was never clear, in, in a situation like this, it was never clear why a variance was needed, and the, the language of the code wasn't, when the setback number stays the same, still have the same setback.
Oh, I, I, I hear you, eh, especially, especially if you describe it as nonconforming in this case.
Now that we have this provision that prohibits height, increase of height in that.
Right, perfect.
And that's what takes it in this kind of application.
I'm not meaning to test you or anything, I'm just trying to make sure I am.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
With the way it was redrafted.
It's good, you hear the discussion because it helps clarify it for me.
To go back to your point, Mary Ann, so maybe it would help that fourth where, whereas from the bottom, page one, where Lucas introduced, maybe it would be a good idea just to make it like a, a, a kind of an allusion to the fact that the reason for the reconstruction, which is the deterioration of water. Or something like the reconstruction of the garage comma necessitated by.
Water damage, because.
Say by water damage, that's actually the phrase she used for application. Average to the beams.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and even know the words. The internal structure of the garage was, was damaged because the roof was really old.
Yeah, well, that will help.
Can I ask you a question for what we just discussed, so, uh, going back to where, where I talked about, because the proposed work would not, you say, affect the norally, norally perimeter of the house, and it would not affect, but would not alter?
Sure, yeah, um, yeah, that's probably better, you know, effect is kind of abstract, more abstract.
Right, I, I, I think our concern is that we're not moving it one way or the other, I mean, most, most particularly further into the setback.
Right, we're just talking about a, exactly, so, yeah, change or alter.
Yeah, I, yeah, so that's, that would make it a little bit clearer to me as to how the rule, the, the, you know, on setback and height, you know, as opposed to line, makes it, uh, a little clearer, I'm sure there's even a better term to that.
Any other changes, correction? Okay, well, I will move then that, uh, we accept the resolution in twenty twenty-four dash five as amended. Now, as far as voting, it occurs to me, only the members in attendance, and Keith was, uh, but Keith will abstain. And, um, so all in favor?
All is here, my question also is, did, were, Keith, you were the, oh, yes, that's right, you did not vote in the prior to.
Right, I will, on the other two, the, the previous two, I will, I will abstain, I abstain from.
You did, okay, I just make sure it's clear on that.
Yeah, um, Abigail, that's, that's right, so, um, for the previous two, um, I was not present at, at that meeting, so when you record the votes on the other two.
It's unanimous as to us three, but Eric was not present, just to make sure you, you knew that, I just sort of forgot. You remember we said it was unanimous, but I just want to make sure that you, you heard it enough.
I, I'd forgotten about that before, but that's correct, so my vote would be valid. So when you record the votes for the previous two that we just did, mark me as abstaining, and to this one, Keith abstaining.
Okay. Because if you're not at the meeting, when they, for the public, then the member can't vote.
As to approving a resolution.
Actually, I actually question that, but, I mean, because, in, in fact, this is an area I really don't understand. There are two votes, in, any application undergoes two votes, there's the vote whether or not to approve the application, then later there's a vote on the resolution, which expresses that same decision, and you could have different compositions of the board during those two meetings.
Hmm.
Um, so what is the relation between those two votes?
Well, I, I think that, uh, it would only be those who were present who could really, uh, make comments about altering or approving the resolution, that, because basically that they were at the hearing, and so they make these findings.
Couldn't, um, couldn't somebody who was not, I mean, a resolution is a resolution, that's one thing, and they, approving the application is this totally separate thing. I mean, what, what we're doing tonight, for example, is just approving this document, the language of this doc, so I could, somebody.
That's amended, yes, resolution.
Right, the resolution, so someone who was not there at this approval could still critique the resolution for itself.
Oh, you can critique it.
Even vote, vote to whether or not to accept.
Well, to give a resolution.
Double check with, like, John.
Yeah, it does make sense, though, because we, we catch ourselves.
It does make sense, though, because we we catch ourselves up with missing workshops, right? And and get yourselves prepared.
Watch a video or could comment through other knowledge and and I'm saying this partly because I've been in many bodies. Meetings of like formal bodies that follow Robert's rule of orders and. Members propose resolutions on any subject, you can vote, any member can propose a resolution on any subject and then. Um everybody gets to vote, you know, it's not like you need special qualification to vote, the resolution is of the itself.
I think I've just to double check, I just wanna, I think when it comes to a resolution and a hearing. Uh it's for those who are present and just double check with John, it's there's a difference between one type of resolution and another. I think this is distinct because there's a hearing involved, uh and and that means you had to be present. And just double check that, and that's why it's sort of, it's sort of fundamental in a sense of. You have to be present, like for instance, if you're sitting in a judiciary panel or, you know. They they have to be present in order to uh pass on uh their vote on how they're gonna rule on a matter. But just double check.
Because I see the resolution as um a written document, I know the minutes do it too. But the resolution is a written documentation of the hearing and the decisions that were made. Um after the hearing when we voted on it, so to me. I would think that only the people who were there for the hearing and voted on the application. Would be able to vote on the resolution because it's just a matter of making sure the resolution matches.
Exactly.
And the other thing is.
But I I mean, that's just.
Yeah, well, we'll continue doing it that way.
Yes.
Cause we've always done it that way, I can say that we've always done it through several forms of boards, and so it was never really questioned and. To me and seeing the way, you know, a a county court would work or Supreme Court would work. It would be that you'd have to be present, you know, e- even a Supreme Court of the United States, you you sort of have to be there to hear the hearing. But ask John about the alternative scenarios where you review the entire recorded. You know, hearing, and if you can then weigh in, or if you were present at the time but remotely. And you do it, come up with a different scenarios, whether it's possible. Or whether it is definitively, you have to be present, and then in order to approve the resolution, you have to have been present.
I'll I'll add that question to my other, the other one about whether we can edit definitions.
Two very good questions, and you know what, I mean, to save money, you could just have them written down and ask them to respond. Or give it to the the board of trustees, saying we have these questions, would you approve, you know, the the attorneys responding to this?
Let's um but turn to our remaining category of business, which is minutes. John, would you like to take over the review of the May fourteen minutes?
Sure.
I mean, you were the acting chair.
Right.
Have a copy.
Sorry.
No, you're good, that's, I wanted to ask. So the minutes for.
Karen, Karen emailed them to us. About a couple of weeks ago. I could forward the message to you now. And sure, yeah.
I mean, if it's possible, they could still even be printed, but, you know, I I can look at it for what it is. And Pete, do you have?
It would have been from.
Yeah, I'll tell you when it was emailed, I think it was emailed on June eleventh, yeah, June eleventh.
Um I'm gonna, I'm gonna just look it in on my phone.
Yeah, it says, it says meeting minutes for May fourteen, June eleven, right there. So I looked up, uh I first looked up Key Worth, but then it came, Karen's came in and. So you can even put Karen in and see if that comes up there. Interesting, and you were there, right? Yeah, you were.
June eight, for May, the May fourteen minutes were sent on June eight.
Mine mine says the eleventh, but anyway, it's still the May fourteenth minutes, right?
Got it, yep, I have that.
Maybe I received, maybe everybody else.
So I forwarded to you and now.
Okay, why don't we, we'll all read it, right, and then, you know, you're Karen, you're gonna get your copy and Pete.
Oh, you want to just forward it to me? Yeah.
I don't have the one for.
Are you doing it now?
Oh, yeah, I do have the one for the twenty twelve, that came in on six two.
Can I ask you, if I were to recommend any slight changes, is that something you can type in immediately? Or that Abigail can?
I can certainly type them in, update the the file.
Can you update the file on the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, good, cause otherwise I would be making notes or something. But but I'll remember what I'm thinking, what what I what I'm.
The list on page two that I found confusing.
Yes, what I.
Most of the points have nothing to do with questioning.
Yeah, so so that's where I was going to say, having read them before, I, that's where I had problems, but we'll get there. Karen, in this case, you know, stepped in as board secretary and rolled through all those basic preparatory uh. Statements to open the hearing.
Where did the the piece that was confusing with the.
I think right here.
It starts with the first one.
Yeah. So, yeah, as far as the minimum front yard setback. What what's not mentioned there is I think I asked.
James.
Because there were two things noted, one was a lot coverage issue and the other one was a side yard setback, right?
Right.
So I asked him, you know, tell us, explain, you know, I said, talk, speak to both of the um. Uh building inspectors of comments, and so he said the minimum set front yard setback is five feet, you know, the house goes right to the property line and porch. And basically, he had said that he had purchased that portion of property. That's what he had said to me, and he said all other houses are in the same way. So but let's try to make sense of each point, uh minimum front yard setback is five feet. Front yard, house goes right to the property line, front porch is on village property. Minimum side yard setback is twelve, and you know, twelve and one half feet. And the entire lot is six feet wide, that that's inaccurate, I don't know.
Yes, I think that's inaccurate.
So that part, the side yard setback is twelve and one half feet wide. That would be true to the, as far as uh his total setback that he would need for his narrow lot. Right, so I think we could, I think we could put just twelve and a half feet, period.
Yeah, the six foot wide lot.
Well, I think the suggestion was, you know, sometimes you can miss and match, one one side could be narrower than the other. But the fact of the matter is he has a conjoining neighbor on his property, right, his, they their houses are right. So uh I would just put it just twelve and a half feet, period, and then take out the rest. Total clearance possible for the addition is four feet, four and a half inches, okay, so that that is at that section. Uh where the addition portion is put in.
That corner.
Right, owners have a limit, a very limited ability to read. Yeah, I don't know, that it's it's already spoken for, I think, I think the the primary point here is that. There's, it it's an hour a lot, and.
Right. That's a, that's a not, it's not a false statement, it's a vague statement.
Yeah, there there is a narrow lot involved and. The set required setbacks are already non-conforming. They are, in fact, non-conforming.
The next point is irrelevant.
Well, the rear setback is conforming, but it's irrelevant.
It it's not in question.
No. That's right.
We should delete that.
Yep.
Lot depth is conforming also irrelevant.
Yes.
Lot is angled.
That's true, lot is angled, the build, the structure, the building is angled on the property, so it's not square flush. And the reason why is that, no less the, again, it's conjoined to the neighboring building, but that building. Portion of that building at the at the rear towards the Hudson is actually on his property.
So that's why you'd say that's relevant for the Hudson, that the lot is.
Well, the angle is actually important, cause it helps the applicant's case, you know, it means that when he, even though he has a. Too small of a setback, it's only at one point, and and then the building angles and the setbacks gets wider. So he's, it's not as if the whole building is four feet, four, four inches, just the one corner.
Yeah, so it's angled on the property, it's angled, it's not square to the, well, it's hard to.
The building is angled on the lot, yeah.
Yes, it's angled on the lot, that's really the way to put it. And I would put the fact that there there's conjoining neighborly uh property, uh that's, you know, to the north. So the buildings are, they're flush against each other.
Right. That I think is already said in the previous voted list.
It says residences have a twin structure originally built.
Yeah, okay.
So after we put lot is angled, the lot area coverage performance is taken at ground level, that's that's, we've stated that before, right? Uh not ne- necessary to lot area coverage, uh it, oh, I guess it is, you know, it's the footprint.
We call it lot coverage, yeah. And and performance doesn't, it's not, doesn't make sense, it's just lot coverage is taken or it's measured.
Is measured at the ground level, second floor addition is adding to the bulk, that's true, I mean, it's not inaccurate about that. The bump out is unavoidable because of the adjoining property, that's true. I mean, it's not unavoidable, but it's, you know, sort of again self-created, but it's it's. It's just that it's angled, the whole property, the whole structure is angled. Uh the small cantilever at the rear, okay, so there is a overhang at the rear at that. Place that's in, that requires that variance, uh but it matches the depth. Of the neighbor's property, but the cantilever over, you know, with the second floor addition does not. Does not go beyond what the footprint is below, meaning, I mean, it's not counted, the fact that there's an inch or two over it. So uh that's the end of that, given the facts and the certain request variance is the only way to address the side. Yard setback issue, I guess it is.
Yeah, now there's a typo.
Take dimensions out.
Dimensions, there is no other word, that's just a typo.
Yeah.
And we have a sentence again about the lot depth conforming and the angled property, which we can delete, cause it was just above. That that last sentence there, we can delete it.
I agree. Yes, agree. The comment, there was no comment. Okay, so under board comment, where it goes, the consistency with the neighboring houses, minimal increase in height. I would put uh. Added second story is consistent with the neighboring buildings. And their bulk and visibility, and their bulk and visibility, so the second floor addition. Is consistent with the neighboring buildings and their built bulk and visibility, so.
Consistent with neighbors and their.
Structures bulk and visibility, I, or you can just leave it out, if you just want to say it's consistent with the neighbors, I. I I think what we're doing is pointing out that, you know, we're looking at the bulk and the visibility in the neighborhood and. It's sort of, everything is tightly packed, I mean, it's the way they used to build the things, and so. You can work that as you wish, you know, you can either put it in or take it out.
We do have consistency with neighboring houses already in there, maybe.
I don't, I just don't think that there's a minimal increase in height, I mean, it's whole second story.
Yeah.
So you're building up and it's in a variance area, it's in a setback area.
It's more the, your point is more, it's more the visibility that's minimal, right, is that what you're saying? The visibility.
Well, I don't know if I use the term minimal myself, I I, you know what, you know what might have been said, uh was that. The, I I guess the uh the added, the added variance, that little portion might be a minimal. But I think the fact that they're adding the second story, it's something that's consistent with everything else, so I use. It's just, just two things going on here.
Well, we do have consistency with neighboring houses, that's quite clear.
That that's clear to me, part of the discussion was also about it, it's not an impact to any visibility. Also sideline uh due to both the neighbors and also the back commerce on Main Street.
Yeah.
So that's why I think the way it's worded, it's just.
What if we take out height and bulk, because just leave visibility, or just say minimal visibility? Cause from almost all sides, you can't see it, you can see it, I guess, on furnace. If you're, if you're standing in the right place, looking back between the houses, you'll see it, but otherwise.
Minimal, minimal visibility issues, issue, or I don't know.
Minimal visibility.
Okay, right.
In other words, it is, it's not, it it may be significant in ball, or in height, just raw numbers, it's significant, but it's. Visibility is minimal, that's the most important thing. Since that's the neighboring houses and and minimal visibility. Seems clear.
So you can see just the next sentence down, uh this one sentence would drop lower than the other when it should be. Okay, so that that ends that, right? Can't edit anything more there, can't change anything else. So we're now reading about more said. So the proposed porch addition, uh you wanna, should we do that or just, that's already.
Where are you?
Pretty obvious, uh this is um third or fourth line from the bottom of sec, uh third page. Like the proposed addition is twelve and a half feet deep, of course, is the fact that it's been referencing porches all along. I just to assume. Let's see, it's like third or fourth, fifth line from the bottom.
This in the bullet list?
Yeah. Under J small. Fourth or fifth from the bottom. Proposed addition is twelve and a half feet deep.
Oh, right, see, okay. Proposed addition is twelve. That's the porch.
For proposed porch.
Yeah, oh yeah, proposed porch.
I mean, we've mentioned porches a few times up above, but.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's better.
Is the bullet with regards to. How not for tables and chairs, right?
That, that, that's, that's what Jay Small was, that's what he threw in. I'm just saying, he was saying, well, we want a porch with depth to allow tables and chairs. He kept saying it, he kept saying it's off the living room.
Because I was like, well, why couldn't it just be a smaller porch?
Right.
And that was.
That's why he said, uh, we were hoping for tables and chairs on it. So I, I, we can take it out. He did say it.
I think it's a valid point because always that issue is the benefit. What is the benefit for the, for the applicant? What are they looking to achieve? And if that's what they want, well, that's up to them, that's their goal.
So here, here it is mentioned, uh, in the minutes noted that the total lot coverage.
Twenty-two, yeah.
The proposed, so the the total required lot coverage or maximum lot coverage. It, I would put noted total maximum lot coverage would be thirty percent. And the proposed. Coverage with the proposed additions would be twenty-two percent.
Coverage with the proposed addition.
Will amount to only twenty-two percent. Sort of, it is a little redundant, but you know, I mean, you know, when you read the second time down, but I at least drives the point.
Total square footage of porch is two seventy-five.
Which is large.
Uh, is that? I, do we need to define? The porch as in which or is that both?
Uh, no, I think, well, what do you mean? It's not both. It's just that one porch. Uh, on the north side of the house.
Do we need to define that it's that?
That, that, that is that area. Well, that's interesting. That's, it's a good point. Now, so that's under the bullet. Yeah, porch on the south side does not require variance. The total square footage of. The belt, west Belvedere side. Uh, proposed Belvedere side porch would be two seventy-five square feet.
Okay.
Just give us a chance to just sit on that porch. Tables and chairs reserved for.
Yeah. The other one sounds like hard fun now.
I think that's it.
Any other changes?
I will move. To accept the minutes as revised, meeting minutes are made for me. For later.
Oh, okay.
All in favor, I abstain.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous with my abstain.
See, that's interesting. So. Say with regards to the hearing minutes, obviously you weren't there. There might be more of an obvious thing because you said there's a difference between the minutes and then going through a resolution. But in both situations, you might want to ask. Well, then it would seem to be the minutes might be more obvious because you weren't there to hear all those specifics.
Right.
Unless you caught up on it on a recorded basis or something, or it could have been zoomed.
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
I enjoyed, I loved the feedback on it.
Eric's like, hand me the ball, hand me the ball.
My favorite response.
You should, we should have put a buzzer button in there every time I got something off people go. I think he had, he had a buzzer that was prompted. Or text.
There's so much I want to say right now.
I know, I know. Well, I'm, I'm saying it, so. Oh, so what are we on now?
We have one more set of minutes.
And twelve, there are two?
Twenty-eight, maybe twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yes, I would, yeah, I'll have to print out the ones. If you need them.
Oh, thank you. Oh.
I'm good, no, I'm good. Yeah, thanks, yeah, thanks.
Do you prefer, oh, sorry, I gave you the whole thing.
Well, if you have a few.
Oh, no, I don't. Resolution, all solution, meeting. That's all.
Oh, no, so we're good because we already have it.
You sure?
Yep, yep, definitely.
Yeah.
If you guys prefer um. Paper gladly.
You can go to the computer, but that's not happening.
See, Heath, you can, you can leave now if you wrap up.
Page one, it should be RN on the district instead of R one. Yeah, um.
Not a side yard variant.
Right, right. This is uh, part of her presentation.
Okay.
Which she, she's going by what she understood at that time and then we substantiate what he. Under the comment, in the comment portion, we clarified that, so.
Struggle with underneath bullets. Might just be the way I'm reading it. But you know, second line, outside the setback and asked if the alteration of same. Or maintenance is considered part of or an additional. The, the phrase, ask if the alteration of same.
This is in the bulleted, it's.
On below, and maybe I'm looking at it as a different minutes.
No, I remember that phrase. Um, where is it?
Meeting notes. Below the bullets, is there a paragraph on what you know?
Below the bullets.
It says M Sanchez, below the bullets.
Yeah.
In that, in there?
Yeah.
Benefits, you know, it's both practical problems with the existing house garage. And minimizing.
Oh, you know what? There must have been a revision versus what they had. Let me go to a different.
Uh, it's more recent.
What, that one? I think this is the most recent.
Yeah, and yours is more recent, so you have one more. Because I have the one that you just read. I have the updated one.
Yeah.
And it was sent more recently, it was.
Some minds outdated, what I see.
Well, let me tell you when I received mine, I can tell you that right now.
Here I am, needing to abstain and up.
Okay, June two, as Eric had said, whoops.
Very relevant. Thanks.
Oh, oh, well.
I only got one, May twenty-eighth minutes by email, I think.
Yeah, it came out June two.
Right. Heath, what, did yours, where did, did yours? Did yours in a message, an email message, sure? What they.
Uh, this isn't possible. I see it in May twenty-first, but it's that, those minutes.
Five twenty-one, well, we did get minutes on May twenty-first. And they were the minutes of four twenty-three. Oh, maybe you're looking at the workshop. You, you're probably looking at the minutes for four twenty-three, which are the workshops for this property. I think we cleared it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all fine.
Oh.
Yeah, we, we cleared it up.
I think.
I was still thinking.
Thank you.
I'm good, yeah. Uh, so.
Yeah, so that we can.
I didn't have any.
Verishing number of the phrase.
Legal phrase crept in. Renovation of the same.
So again, I want to, since we're on this. So I keep thinking every time I read about like the setback now. So sometimes when we're talking about setback. We're referring to what the current setback is, even if it's not conforming. It's this setback, that's, that's how we were using that term in the last, in the resolution or something. So when we use, when we reference to setback, we're saying. The current nonconforming setback, the line, not the line it should be, but the line it is that's not conforming. And uh, and we're looking at it that way and then. We're saying that's not changing, it's not been altered and what we're looking at is the height. I got. Because the, that clarity was next expressly put out. We, we all understood what we were talking about.
Yeah.
But it wasn't segregated into different phrases like that. We would refer, we would never, we would always refer to the setback. As being what was the required setback. And, and, and that's how we always looked at it. And then we, then we said, well, this is a narrow, nonconforming lot. So therefore it's a nonconforming situation and another section of the code applies to it, what the setback would be. And then when we say that, this is what the code requires that setback be. And if it was already in, we would use the term grant, it's grandfathered in because it's really not existing beyond. There's no changes beyond it. It's building up in bulk, which we then looked at the bulk. As being potentially a problem. And uh, because you're building in a nonconforming setback area, even though it's a nonconforming building. Uh, you know? So that's how we would look at it. We understood what we were talking about, even though it was sort of, sort of wishy washy, but. I got a little more confused when the, when the setback got described as a definitive setback and I'm like. Uh, let me see, what is the setback here? We would always look at what is, we use the term setback is what the legal setback would be. And then, and then we would know visually if there was a bulk thing and uh, like for instance, uh. The, some of the former chairs here would be, we all understood that. Building at fault could be an issue. Even if they weren't expanding uh, beyond the current property line and they were going up. And as long as it was in a non, if it was in a nonconform, if the building was not conforming. So it was already in the setback area and you're building up, that became an issue. That would be an issue, right?
That's still.
It's the same way. It's just you use different terminology is, is what it is. That's all.
The other changes. Sides the R one to RN. I'll move that we accept the minutes of May twenty-eighth as amended.
I'll second it.
All in favor and does anyone have to, um, yeah, Heath abstained, so.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor?
Said you could leave.
Yeah.
All right, unanimous with extension by Heath. Any other business for the board?
Thank you. And Abigail, and. And feel free if there's anything you're missing or you didn't hear, you just said, would you repeat that, please do so, you know, I mean.
Yeah, definitely, Abigail. Be sure to ask me, you know. Know how to handle something or.
Yeah, feel free to just ask us.
Um, but yeah, actually, could you repeat who seconded that last motion?
Okay, to adjourn, oh wow.
I seconded, yeah. We didn't even do the adjournment yet, yeah, okay.
That's like indeed.
John, John seconded. I, I made the motion, John seconded. So if there is no other business, then. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll keep this, but I'll, I'll leave this here for them to, this way. Because.